I'm gonna share my screen. So what you are seeing, I hope everybody is seeing it, in case you did not get the printout, is the agenda for tonight's meeting, the February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Shall we stand and salute the flag, please? I, Major Legion.
To the flag of the United States. And to the Republic.
Public. Which stands one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our supreme law.
Statement for the meeting, please.
Good evening to all, can you hear me? Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act was originally provided in the following manner. By emailing written notice to the carrier post and retrospect on January fifth, twenty twenty-one. By posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the municipal building on January fifth, twenty twenty-one. And by filing written notice with the clerk of the borough of Woodland on January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Public notice of the electronic public meeting was posted on the borough's website, www dot woodland nj dot org. And was again made to the carrier post and retrospect as well as posted on the door of the municipal building in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, an adherence to the Department of Community Affairs, Division of the Local Government Services, DLGS, guidelines in response to the COVID nineteen state of emergency. Members of the public were also notified that they may participate in the public meeting electronically by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. Meeting ID number eight zero two eight nine two seven seven four five and pass code six three five one five eight.
Thank you. Please bear with me, just wanna admit one more person in, hopefully. Can mute him or herself. Okay, you just got into the meeting again for number eight five six nine six two zero five six nine. I ask you to, please, can you mute yourself? I believe you should be star six or star sixty-nine, but you can be able to mute yourself, please. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Fontaner?
Present.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Edward?
Present.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Present.
President Early?
Here.
Mayor Shewakie?
Present.
Thank you.
All in. We start with our committee report. At this time, we'll start with Emergency Management Committee Councilman Edward.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Can you volume up a little bit?
Is that a little better, or saying?
Yeah, if you have more level, you can raise it up high, that'll be good.
Here. Is that better?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Alright, uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, Council President and Council Staff. Um, Emergency Management Report reads as follows for the month of January two thousand twenty-one. Uh, total calls was sixty-nine. Um, the breakdown is fifty-seven for EMS and twelve calls for fire. Um, thus ends the report for the month of January for EMS and fire.
You heard the report of Emergency Management. May I get motion and second, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Fuentes and second by Council President. Full vote.
Mr. Fontaner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edward?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Thank you, all yes.
All yes. At this time, Public Safety, Councilwoman Fontanes, Councilman Fontaner.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Solicitor, fellow council members, the public. This is my, well, my report for Public Safety for the month of December twenty twenty. Below are the monthly total for the Police Department for the, uh, month of December twenty twenty. There were five thousand thirty-three calls for service. There were twenty-six parking summons, forty-three moving violation, three adult arrests, zero juvenile arrests, zero DUI, five verbal ordinance. Um, there was zero vehicle, uh, tow vehicle for the month of December. Crime, there were one robbery, one aggravated assault, one simple assault, nine theft, three burglary, two caught out disorderly conduct, several drug offenses, and one motorco, one motor vehicle theft for the month of December twenty twenty. For the mu, uh, month of January twenty twenty-one, there was a total, uh, call for service was four thousand one hundred and thirty-three. There were forty parking summons, there were fifty moving violation, there were six adults arrested, there was one juvenile arrest, there was zero DUI, there were twelve verbal ordinance, and there was one, uh, tow vehicle for the month of January. In addition to this, there was two robbery, one aggravated assault, four simple assault, six theft, two burglary, two disorderly conduct, one drug offenses, and three, uh, motor vehicle theft. In addition to report, I would like to also add that Lieutenant Robinson has told me that they are in need of two vehicle because they have completed their lifespan of five years. The Public Safety Committee has extended their request and has approved the purchase of two Chevrolet Tahoe, uh, vehicle. The vehicle will be purchased at the mall Chevrolet, which has a state contract, therefore we don't have to go forbidding. Since the committee has approved the request, we're now going to the next phase, which is to have our CFO to go over the details. And this is my report.
You heard the report of Public Safety. Can I get motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Council President, second by Councilwoman Feliciano. Full vote, please.
Mr. Fontaner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edward? Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
All yes, thank you.
Thank you. Public Building, Councilman Rodriguez. We, we cannot hear you, it is so deep. Is that why you could turn your mute, I mean, your phone on?
You hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, good evening, President, good evening, uh, Councilmen, uh, good evening, uh, Presidents. For the month of, um, January, there's no report for the month. That's my report.
You've heard the report of Public Building. Can I please get motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fontanes and second by Councilman Fuentes. Can I get full vote, please?
Mr. Fontaner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edward? Mr. Edward? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Thank you. Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
Thank you. President Early?
Yes.
Thank you, all yes.
Thank you. Next report, Public Affairs and Recreation, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Good evening, Mayor, Solicitor, Madam Clerk, members of Council President and the public. This is my report for the month of January. Uh, we have no activities planned for the month of January. This is my report for the month of January.
You've heard the report of Public Affairs and Recreation. Can I get motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Fuentes and second by Councilman Fontanes. Full vote, please.
Mr. Fontaner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early? President Early?
Yes.
Thank you, all yes.
Thank you. This time, we hear from Finance Councilman Fuentes.
Good evening, Mayor. Very excited, Council and Councilmembers, public and Solicitor. This is my report. Three nine point point one. Okay, um, property taxes, tax payments, it's eight hundred and six count, which is a total of nine hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety cents. Name payment is forty-nine count and the total is fifty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. DCA training fees is six hundred and sixty-two dollars total. This, um, landlord registration was five, which is a total of one thousand and fifty dollars. MRNA is a count of six, which is a total of twenty-three thousand and fifty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. The total is, um, and it reverses total is eight hundred and ninety-nine count, which is a total of one point million and seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. This is, this is my report, good evening, which I am ready. Thank you.
You've heard the report of fairness. Can I get motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Council President and second by Councilwoman Feliciano. Can I get vote, please?
Mr. Fontaner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
All yes, thank you.
Public Work, Council President, Ali.
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council and members of the public. This is the, uh, uh, monthly report for the month of January twenty twenty-one. Recycling, we had twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty pounds or thirteen point five nine tons. Trash, it was two hundred and twelve thousand and sixty pounds or one hundred and six point three tons. There is zero yard waste. Um, that is the report for the month of January twenty twenty-one that was respectfully submitted by Robert Kenny. Um, and also to bring the Council's attention, um, and I have briefly discussed it with my committee, we will be going through it more thoroughly with all the, uh, members available of the committee, uh, regarding some parking issues along these threats of Third Street from Parker down to Cooper, uh, where the, uh, Public Works is having difficulties maneuvering the, uh, trash truck as well as the snowplow. As you know, we've been getting our fair share of snow this year, um, and with the way the parking is, the, it makes the road a little tight for the trash truck as well as the, uh, snowplows to get through. Um, so Public Works, uh, Director would like me to discuss, um, you know, eliminating the parking along that strip to make things easier for them. I know there was a section, um, over in the Cooper area that was at one time like that. However, the, uh, street is not properly marked out of block. So that's something that we will be bringing to the table, um, before next meeting. That concludes my report for January from Public Works. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. You heard the report of Public Work. Can I get motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fontanes and second by, full vote, please.
Mr. Fontaner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edward?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
All yes, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll head over to Correspondents and, uh, we'll like, uh, Mark to give us update on the construction work going on in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I submitted my report in writing, but I'll go over a few of the items that have changed since our last report. Under the, uh, DOT Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one project, we received funding from DOT for, um, reconstruction of Parker Avenue and also Elm Avenue. We submitted a proposal in writing and I believe you have a resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-seven on tonight's agenda for that. The twenty fiscal year twenty twenty project on Parker Avenue and Chestnut Avenue, that Lexit concrete is doing the reconstruction on. The milling and base paving was completed. We had, um, some issues with some clay out there, so we had to do some base repairs. The project is substantially completed now. We submitted a letter to DOT, um, notifying them that the project was complete and we also requested that the asphalt coring and testing get waived. And we just don't wanna have five brand new, or five holes cut into our brand new road just to test it. Uh, there is a criteria, if you have less than five thousand square yards of new asphalt, you can request that waiver, so we did that. We also submitted a payment application, uh, number two for that project as well as a change order number one final. Um, I see you have a resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-six on tonight's agenda for the payment. I did not see anything regarding the change order approval. Um, but we were recommending the change order number one final get approved as well. Um, there was a slight increase in cost, but that's because we were maximizing the amount of sidewalk work that was being constructed within the DOT budget and we were able to hold it under the budget. Um, the, um, CDBG year forty-two project, uh, we had applied for the three hundred block of, um, I think it was Parker. We got word a cou, a month ago that that did not get funding. However, not in my report is that they just announced, CDBG just announced that twenty twenty-one applications are due on March twelfth. So we'll be working with the mayor, trying to come up with an application, present that to Council and get a resolution authorizing us to submit an application for whatever project is determined. The Elm Avenue Culvert project, we're finalizing the design. Replacement of the culvert will require us to close the road, so we are currently coming up with a detour plan. Once that detour, detour plan is finalized, we will forward it to the Woodland Police, the Collingswood Police and NJDOT for review and approval because part of the detour will be using, uh, Route one thirty to get around Elm Avenue when it's closed. And the Woodland Firehouse, the CDBG project for year thirty-nine. As you remember, we had the, uh, transfer of funds done in a December council meeting. And we did finalize the contracts, cleared out the bid. The project was just advertised this past Monday. There is a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Uh, any contractor who's bidding is welcome to come. And then the, the Zoom bid opening will be held on Thursday, March fourth. And that's everything that was updated since our last report. Unless anybody has any questions about anything.
I had a question. Oh.
Uh, okay. What hundred, wha, what block, what hundred block of Elm Avenue are you talking about?
Which, which in, in reference to, in reference to which wa, what, what prob, the culvert are you talking about?
Yes.
The culvert is where there's a, as you're going into Collingswood, I don't know what block that is. It's right by the Camden County Park. There's a culvert that goes under the roadway.
Right.
We have to replace that culvert because it's failing and we have funding in place to do it. Um, we're finalizing the design plans and when they replace the culvert, they're gonna have to tear up the road to replace the culvert and the road will be closed. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to detour around that while the road's closed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Edwards?
Uh, good evening, how you doing? Thank you. Um, in reference to, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-six, um, I thought I heard you say that it was a price influx, so this price is not gonna be the payment that we're actually requesting or approving.
The payment is cor-
Forty-three?
The payment is correct. There was a change order to increase the contract value.
Okay.
And I, I believe.
Mr. Edwards, this is Brian Lazook. Um, at the appropriate time, I'm gonna ask that the mayor adopt Resolution thirty-six with an amendment to include change order one. The original contract amount was two hundred thousand nine hundred and ninety-three and with the change order, it would bump it to two hundred and eighteen thousand ninety-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but I believe those are the figures.
Um, I, I, I believe I have my, um, my, my engineer report has the wrong value. The, the, it was a, it was a seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollar and ninety-seven increase brought to contract value up to two hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents. It was a three point seven nine percent increase and we had a two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar budget for construction. So we were under the, the budget.
Okay, so again, that's two hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. Hey, Matt, me, Mark, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. This time, let's go over to our new business. Um, Order number twenty twenty-one dash one. It's public hearing and adoption. It's an ordinance of the Board of Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, entitled Stormwater Control. That was introduced on our last meeting. So today's gonna be the adoption day. So can I get motion a second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Council President and second by Council Fontanes. I will now open it to the public for any question. I will now close it down for the public. Now ask for full vote.
Mr. Fontaner?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edward?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
All yes, thank you.
All yes. Ordinance number twenty twenty-one, number two, public hearing and adoption. It's an ordinance amended in chapter eighty-seven of the Code of the Board of Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, entitled Parking Handicap. Can I please get motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Edwards?
Other way.
Who was that?
Fuentes.
Other way.
Oh, oh, sorry. Counsel by, I mean, motion by Councilman Fuentes. And second by Councilman Edwards, is that it?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'll open it for the public. Okay, I now close it from the, to the public. Can I get full vote, please?
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano? President Early?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes. Resolution number 2021-36, resolution of the Board of Woodland, County of Camden, State of New Jersey, are price payment number two to Alexa Concrete LLC.
Good evening, Mayor Brian Lezuk. And that would also be with an amendment to approve and adopt change order number one in the amount of $7,956.97 for a total contract amount of 217,950.67.
That information's correct. Sorry about that, Brian.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, can I get motion and second, please?
Motion. Second.
Second.
This motion by Councilman Edwards?
Correct.
And second by Councilman Fuentes?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any question from the council? Now, if I may remember, part of this change order is happened to be stop base. We have a bad stop base, and they have to get rid of it and to replace it. And that's an additional money to it. I think that was all in the total of the change order, I believe. Is that Mark?
It was all inclusive, correct. And we were able to stay under budget by doing the extra sidewalk work as well. So we were happy with how it turned out. Even though we had to do extra work out there, we were still able to hold the budget.
Okay, and also, we still have some retainage to hold back until they finish all the punch lists.
There is some curb damage out there that has to be repaired or replaced. We can't do that right now with the current temperatures. We're holding over $8,000 in retainage pending that work being completed.
Okay, full vote, please.
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano? President Early?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes. Resolution number 2021-37. It's a resolution of the Board of Woodland authorizing the Board of Engineers to design and publicly be fiscal year 2021, New Jersey Department of Transportation, reconstruction of Parker Avenue and, um, Avenue project. Can I get motion and second, please?
Motion.
Motion by Council President? And who seconded, please?
I'll say you.
Who?
Rodriguez.
All right, and second by Councilman Rodriguez. Any question, please?
Can I ask you a question? What hundred block was this at, Parker?
I think it's a, it's a 300 block.
By the baseball field.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Elm Avenue is what hundred block? I think 100, right? Mark?
I believe it's a 200 and 300 block. We don't, we didn't get as much funding as we requested, so we're up to prioritize which blocks we're gonna do. So we will look at the budget and make a recommendation and get your approval before we move forward with the design. But I believe it was the 200 and 300 block that we had requested funding for.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more question? If not, we'll move for full vote, please.
Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, yes, thanks. Approval of bill, prepaid bill list, can I get motion and second, please?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Edwards and second by Councilman Fontanaz. I'm sorry, what did you say? Any other new business?
No.
Hi, we, we all heard what Council President said regard to the street and construction. I'm sorry, sir, yes.
We need a, we need a full vote for the approval of bills. We only did a motion and a second.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Okay, Mr. Fontana?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano? President Early?
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I apologize to council. We'll move on to new business. As I was saying, you guys heard what Council President said with regard to the construction we have on the road and the allowance that the most of our property need to go buy to do stuff with the parking. I will go back to what we have in the ordinance, and then I make copy and file forward to Council President so that she will look at it, and then they can mitigate based on that. And once they finish talking, hopefully, we will get the, uh, the engineer, the board engineer available and look at it and see how we will move forward and create an ordinance to make things good for people to go by.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we're about to open to the public. Again, our resident. Everything is allowed for a five-minute discussion, and we'll try not to repeat the discussion over and over. And please address me in any situation that you want to talk about. And if I do have the answer, I will answer you. If I don't, I will document it and try to get the answer for you come next meeting. At this time, I ask for motion. First and second to open up to the public, please. Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fontanaz and second by Council President. At this time, it's open to the public. Please state your name, your address, and address us, please.
This is Robert Baum, 1918 Woodland Avenue.
Hi, Rob.
Hi, so I have a couple of questions. I brought up before about a campaign sign ordinance, especially since you, you guys, you passed a close line ordinance because other towns are doing the same thing. And I mentioned that other towns, like a lot of other municipalities, have campaign sign ordinances up. I mean, last time I drove up Woodland Avenue, we still have campaign signs up there from three months ago. And if you're concerned about how the town looks, those signs being up there for so long makes a town look like nobody really cares. So I really think that you need to address that particular issue. Also, with all the talk about parking, I know that many times residents and professionals have brought up the fact that that parking spot in front of the laundromat violates state traffic law. And additionally, it causes problems for pedestrians trying to cross the street there. Now, when it was brought to your attention in the first place, back when that yellow line was still there, council's response was to have that line painted white, which doesn't change the fact that it's still in violation of the state traffic law. It doesn't change the fact that it's still a hazard for pedestrians crossing the street. So is anything being done about that?
Thank you, Rob. About the sign, we have come through our ordinance to see if there's anything about sign. And also, if we can borrow from another township and adopt so we can move on and address all the signs. Again, it's not on a public pole, nor are they on a public land. It's an individual property owner's sign posted on their land. But we're still looking into it. Then about a parking on, in front of the laundromat, to be honest with you, if you go to our zoning code, there should be zero car parked on Woodland Avenue from the circle, the boundary between Collinswood and Woodland, and all the way back to 168. There should be zero vehicle on Woodland Avenue. Now, how we got to where we got, I don't know. And we are looking into it to see how we're gonna address it. And it might, it might not look good if we address one section without addressing the entire section. The council and the mayor, it was gonna be a compromise to it. That's what I can answer to you right there.
Okay, then just, just to, you know, touch back on that, it's, I mean, I understand that, that some people may consider that to be unfair to address only particular portions of that roadway. But when there are particular sections of that roadway that are hazardous to pedestrians and to drivers, it seems that prioritizing those, those sections, like here and like, I'm sorry, Palton, like those, those, prioritizing those doesn't seem like that would be a bad idea, given that there are problems, visibility problems. I mean, you guys went, you went and passed an ordinance to try to improve the sightline issue down here. You still only got part of the problem solved, not all of it. That would go a significant way to solving more of that problem. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And I, I just wanna say that, um, that there is no hazardous issue on that road. And also, there is no visibility issue on that road.
Excuse me, sir, with all due respect, if I have to step five feet into the street to see around the cars.
Hang on, hang on, I'll let you talk. I wish you can let me finish.
Very well.
Thank you. Now, when I said talk about visibility or sight distance based on that parking in front of laundromat, now, what is a cross intersection and what is the direction of that cross intersection? The cross intersection is Parker Avenue.
Correct.
And it's going towards, um, um, Montefran. I'm sorry, it's going towards, um, Wadufetti Avenue. It's heading that direction. However, same direction is where the parking lot is, and it's not infringing any visibility to look towards the Cooper Avenue to see if a vehicle is coming or not. No, it does not. Okay, that said.
Okay, but with, with, no, 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 see, I'm specifically talking about pedestrians, and I've been specifically talking about pedestrians for months, okay? And, you know, it's, it's great if that parking spot does not infringe upon people trying to drive up Parker Avenue. I'm talking about people trying to cross the street. And it absolutely is a visibility issue, because, look, I'm a tall guy. I have to step five feet at least into the street to be able to see around a car that's parked there. Okay, there's definitely a pedestrian visibility issue.
Okay, like I said, we're looking into it. Thank you very much. Anybody from the resident? Please state your name and address us.
Clyde Cook, 2301 Woodland Avenue.
I'm sorry, who did you say you are?
Clyde Cook, 2301 Woodland Avenue.
Go ahead, sir.
My question for you, Mayor, tonight is, first thing first, you know, I, I felt that prior to the meeting starting, it would have been nice to have paid homage to Nancy Hallahan for her services. I do know her passing took place in January, but it would have been nice to have at least had a moment of silence on the beginning of the council meeting and respect for her in the passing and the respect for the family. So my heart does go out to the Hallahan's family on Nancy's passing, and we wish the family the best, and we will keep them in our prayers. Secondly, I know a while back I expressed to you and request for information containing to the years of the fire trucks. And I have yet to been given that information from you as far as the purchase date for the fire trucks that Willen currently have in service. Can you hear me, Mayor?
I heard you very well. You done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So are you gonna be able to provide that information?
Yes, I will be able to get it for you.
And my last question would be, um, the information that was requested by a resident that posted on the Woodland United page, they were requesting information for the victims that, of the fire that took place over on Cypress Avenue, so that could put together something to help that family. And we've yet to been given that information so that we can help provide for that family.
I'm sorry, I do not go to Woodland United, and this is my first time hearing your request. However, there is some guy who used to be a fireman in Woodland here, and he has started doing donation and bringing stuff in for this family. guy who used to be a fireman in Woodland here and, uh, he has started doing donation and bringing stuff in for those family. So, if you can, let's hear and turn and, um, you know, we all can go with, uh, uh, spearheaded through him and get this in. Um, I can provide you with the name and phone number of this individual you could reach out to. But sorry, I do not go to Woodland United.
Um, bear with me one second, I'm gonna give you his name.
Whose name?
The individual that, uh, actually spoke with us, David Sereets.
Well, I, I don't.
He said he held, he had a conversation with Mayor Chueke and Jerry at the Borough Hall about helping out with any kind of donations for the family that lost their house. And they informed me to bring it to the Borough Hall or a firehouse from nine A M. to five P M. On Monday or Friday night at the firehouse between six and eight P M. So, if anyone wants to donate any kinds of household items or clothing or food, please feel free. Now, I, I asked for that information because not a lot of people were given information and I know people do wanna donate to that family and help that family out during their time of need.
Thank you very much. The same individual, you guys can go through him. He've already dropping stuff for the fire victim in the firehouse. He has my number and he has Jerry's number so that we can be able to accept those information or whatever that he has. So, why don't you, United, go through him instead of going with different people, um? So, if you have anything, go through him. He can, he knows the way to drop it and how to go around it. Now, your time is up and, and I'm here to listen to another resident concern, please.
When will you have that fire information for me?
Your time is up. You're not even listening to what I'm saying, uh.
No, I heard what you said, but you didn't provide that fire information. Then this is now the third month.
Okay, I will get it for you. We need to move on. Another resident, please. Thank you.
Hi, Kelly Jankowski, one twenty-two Maple Avenue, Woodland.
Hi, Kelly.
I have a, um, a question on that parking, uh, um, down on Woodland Avenue, uh, where it is a sight distance for people. The crosswalk is right on the parking. The cars park, it's supposed to be twenty-five feet from a corner when you park. And that, it is a problem there with people crossing. As a matter of fact, that, uh, Mrs. Williams was crossing, I think that's her last name, the, the pastor's wife. And she had a hard time crossing because you can't see the people until you get on top of them. And I brought this up before about it, but nothing was done, just like Robert said. And the other parking issue I have, um, we have to park on Cedar because there's no parking on our street and people, uh, got crap smeared all over their car when they parked over on Cedar. And there's also the fireman's parking spot for you on Cedar, but I see other cars parked there and not your car. And it also in the ordinance, it says if, um, wait a minute, uh, about if you're not using it to go to fire calls and you're not in town for half the week, so why would we, uh, give you a parking spot in front of your house? If you're not gonna utilize it for fire calls and other people, because this would alleviate the problem so our residents on our street could park that are here through the week. Besides the fact you do have a driveway because there's a, a car that sits in there. And the other question I have is on the, um, the copies that you make at the Borough Hall, you charge us ten cents. Do you charge, do you just keep track of how many copies are being made on the copy machines? Hello?
Okay, you done your question?
Uh, one more. You have proven that parking spot, did you measure it to see that it's gonna fit on Woodland Avenue, the handicap spot for Chueke?
I'm sorry. What did you say again?
Did you measure the spot to see that it was gonna be big enough for his car to fit? For the handicap spot that you're approving for Woodland Avenue for Chue, Chueke? Chueke.
You might as well call him Joseph.
No, no, his name ain't Joseph. Chaka.
Okay, um, anything dealing with the parking, um, handicap parking and approval? It's all police information and police review and, uh, uh, we do not have any insight on that. And just like they have been approving all the handicap parking, that's the same way they walk through this. Then, um, your next question, I do not think that we, um, I, I don't know if we do, uh, count for all the prints that goes downstairs. Um, I don't know much about that and, um, it's something I can check up and get back to you if they do any counting on the prints. And also, no, no, hello?
Yeah.
Do you want me to continue answering your question?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I said I'm here.
Sure. Then about the, uh, parking on my firefighter parking, um, just where you sometimes see people parked there, that's the way I do sometimes see people parked right there. Okay, so, um, uh, yes, whenever I'm not there, it stays open and when I'm there, I utilize it. Okay, um, about the, um, uh, parking on Woodland Avenue, yes, you have come to our attention and, um, uh, we're gonna look into it and try to address it. Any more person from the, uh, resident that have any question? Okay. At this time, I would like to have vote to close it up for the resident. Motion and second, please?
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Council Fontanaz and Council Fuentes. At this time, I close the portion to the public. Motion to adjoint the meeting.
Very soon.
Motion by Council President and who did the second?
Second, Fuentes.
Second by Council Fontanaz. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we thank God that we can all meet together today again to see each other as we continue to navigate this, um, uh, time. And, uh, please continue to stay safe, keep your social distance, wash your hands, wear your mask. And I'm glad to tell you that, uh, um, we, we really made a good ton on this COVID and, um, uh, one of the pastors in town is trying to bring the, uh, injection into the town. And, uh, county has a place that you could go and fill in information. It's a minor information and your age and, uh, that will put you on the list to be able to get the vaccine. I encourage everybody to please go get the vaccine as soon as possible. Uh, want everybody safe and, um, and I'll be glad to see all of you again, uh, next month. And you have a wonderful evening. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, Rob.